Well, I'd like to welcome everyone to the Public Safety Veterans Subcommittee. And what we're going to do is start off with the call to order. And can we have a roll call now? I mean, we have a quorum, I'm sorry.
We're a little lost because of our fire drill.
Yeah. So can we, anyone make a motion to approve November 12th minutes?
I move to approve November 12th.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
What I'd like to do right now is have call to the public. And I see we have three cards. We have Mr. Walt Gray, if you'd like to come on up.
Thank you, Councilman Norakowski. I just want to say something that I think is obvious. You know, I'm from the West Side Town Hall Steering Committee. We have been interested in the Police Department for a couple of years now, still working with the Police Department with our commander in the West Side. I think the obvious thing is that now with the latest information or the latest calls for lack of confidence in the police chief, things that we think, and again, we think this is obvious, that should be checked within the Police Department is the minority officers, if there's some type of Minority Officers Association, and also the Women's Officers Association. If there's those types of groups or sampling of those officers in those groups as to what their viewpoints are regarding the police chief and his performance. And I think that should just be part of the whole review that the city manager is conducting. Thank you.
Thank you, Walt. And we'll look into that for you, and I'll get to you those answers about if there are groups that, for the police officers, that are minority groups for women and minorities. We have, is it RE or RC?
RE.
All righty.
Good morning, Chairman Norakowski and council members. My name is R.E. Gullian. I'm a long-term resident of Phoenix, and I reside in the Northeast. I've been wrestling with an issue now for a couple of weeks, and I'm not quite certain how to present it, but in any event, over the course of the last 13 years, I've worked very closely with employees within the city of Phoenix departments, and I also work with fellow community activists. On October 18th, the Desert Horizon Precinct held a GAIN event, which I believe stands for Getting Arizona's Involved in Neighborhoods. And at that session, the microphone was given to a council person so that he or she could make a presentation. The council representative at that time chose to address a proposition which was most controversial that would be present, that was present on the November 4th ballot. In the assertions given, the representative had one firm opinion on how the proposition should have been voted upon. However, there were attendees present on the grounds at Desert Horizon Precinct that were operating from perhaps a different set of facts and would have voted differently. From there, apparently, the commander sent an email message from the city of Phoenix website to the council representative. Thereafter, on November 4th, of course, the ballots were counted and the proposition, however it fell, yes or no, occurred. As of November 14th, the commander was transferred to another location. I've been in the Northeast area for some time and have worked with at least seven commanders. And the last four didn't have a complete tour. I think the typical tour is two to three years. And the last four, two were promoted to Assistant Chief, so I think that may be a training ground at Desert Horizon Precinct. One left to teach school, and then, of course, the commander that just recently left, his tour was shortened. So, I'm tired of fretting over this, and I'm hoping that I can turn it over to you and that you might check into the who, what, when, where, why, and how of it. And I'm hoping that you'll delve deeper than most people would, and that I believe many things are done by, under the banner of the good of the department, and most are. And I have the highest regard for the men and women that serve within the Phoenix Police Department. My goal is not to harm anyone, but I do believe that there's a difference between what you do as a private citizen versus your role or the position that you have as a livelihood. For instance, I am a citizen, but I am also a community activist.
Thank you so much. And one of the recommendations I would do is maybe you can talk to our Assistant City Manager and see where we can take it on from there. And then the next person we have is Mark Spencer.
Who do you recognize?
Now, Mark, I don't recognize you anymore. Who is this guy? He looks like an attorney.
I appreciate it. It's not the years, it's the mileage. Ms. Pastor and Gallego, I don't think I've ever had the pleasure of speaking to you before, at least certainly in front of you, so it's a delight, nice to be here. Appreciate your time and your service with council members Williams and Norakowski. An alarming trend being demonstrated by the city manager appears to be a willful determination not to adhere to the Phoenix Police Operations Order, which mandates that all allegations of misconduct be thoroughly investigated. The destabilization that is taking place, both with our community partners and with rank-and-file officers, seems to stem from Mr. Zucker's comfort in relying upon informal assessments in lieu of time-tested investigations. It looks as if a repeated trend of administrative action without administrative investigation is best highlighted by two recent examples. The first example, the police chief's interaction with Donna Rossi at City Hall was aired by News 5 to their local audience citywide. The chief's conduct, contact, appears less than professional, and Ms. Rossi's allegation that Chief Garcia pushed her was captured and presented on video. On December 1, 2014, Mr. Zucker's administrative action without an administrative investigation in regards to these allegations of misconduct was documented in a response to plea. His response falls woefully short of the historical practice and professionalism of the Phoenix Police Department. I would encourage the Subcommittee to remind Mr. Zucker of at least three points. One, policy does not call for the city attorney to do a review and provide an assessment. Administrative investigations are used to determine if misconduct is evident, not hunches or perspective, perspectives from the city's esteemed legal counsel. Number two, real or alleged victims are not required to initiate a police misconduct investigation. On May 15, 2012, Officer Patrick Larison was investigated for his video-captured contact with a juvenile four months after the incident occurred. The juvenile didn't complain, the parent didn't complain, nor did the school administration, but yet Chief Garcia felt discipline of the police employee based upon an internal investigation was warranted. Inconsistency undermines the credibility of management and erodes the confidence of taxpayers. Number three, Mr. Zucker needs to remember, if no misconduct was evident, then why did the city's IT department block access to the News 5 video from inside the city's internet? Chief Garcia did nothing wrong, then why not allow his interaction with Ms. Rossi to serve as a stellar example of policing with a purpose for all to see? Certainly, Chief Garcia should not be denied the exoneration provided from a formal investigation or the corrective action facilitated by any findings of sustained policy violations. Without an administrative investigation, it's impossible to communicate whether the chief's interaction with Ms. Rossi is condoned and subsequently sets a pattern for frontline officers with citizens, or condemned reaffirming the Police Department's commitment to healthy and respectful dialogue and interaction with all of our community partners, certainly those in the media. To assist Mr. Zucker in running the Police Department in a manner consistent with past practice, as a taxpayer myself in Bill Gates's district, I am making a formal complaint and requesting that police employees Garcia and Miller, with two I's, be investigated for police policy violations in regards to the aforementioned news story broadcast by Will, can I steal some of Will's time?
Absolutely.
Just a second point, that'll be short, Mr. Norakowski. Second.
You have another two minutes.
Thank you, Mr. Norakowski. The theme here is administrative action without administrative investigation. Let's continue with the second point. A complaint letter received by Judicial Watch on November 5, 2014, states that, and I quote, "As Stella Madrano was arrested, prosecuted, and imprisoned for an armed robbery she did not commit, because of her arrest, Ms. Madrano was imprisoned in the Maricopa County Jail for approximately 90 days. Tellingly missing from the probable cause statement are fact of the clerk's identification of a different suspect. By January 3, 2012, the charges against Ms. Madrano were at last dismissed by the prosecutor in the interest of justice. After the state finally tested the DNA and fingerprint exemplars, Ms. Madrano had volunteered on the date of her arrest, which failed to indicate her as a contributor of fingerprints or DNA to the crime scene. The charges have never been refiled, period, unquote. She was arrested six weeks after she just had a baby, and they separated her from that child for three months, and they had the wrong person. Recent settlement correspondence with the city would indicate that Ms. Madrano's civil rights were indeed violated, but yet even though administrative action in the form of settlement talks are ongoing at the expense of the taxpayer, it appears that no administrative investigation of police management misconduct was produced. As a result, one is left wondering in light of the apparent absence of a misconduct investigation." Question, are taxpayers being offered in a civil rights violation settlement based upon inadequate police policies, willful police management misconduct, or serious police errors and omissions by Chief Garcia's management team? Without an investigation, the reason for any settlement remains unclear and ambiguous. Question, what amount of taxpayers, tax dollars have been spent by the city thus far for the legal services in this settlement by Lori Burke at the Burke Law Firm at both state and federal court, which included an appeal? Lastly, would an administrative investigation been initiated if the alleged suspect in the armed robbery been a white male in councilperson Gates's district and not a brown-skinned female in councilperson Norakowski's district? Seems that the city manager and police chief are widening the hesitancy in our community partners and deepening the labor unrest. The failure to act is to act, and I'm asking the council to take action in regards, either make a change in police management or have the city manager adhere to clear and substantiated police policy. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mark. And it's so important to have these public comments and public hearings that we can actually hear of incidents and things that are going out there in the community. So once again, I'd like to thank all those individuals that have put in cards and opened the doors for different things that are out there. What we'll do is I'll make sure that we pass it on to the right staff members to look into all those questions that you have, and we'll get a response to you. Thank you. With that, we'll continue to, items four through six, there are consent items, there's no presentations that are planned, but however staff's here if you have any questions.
Any questions, I move approval.
Okay, we have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor of items four through six, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, items four through six pass. And our next item is item number seven, the sex offenders clustering. Thank you all for being here, and it's all yours.
Thank you, Chairman Norakowski, Subcommittee members. We are here to update you on information regarding registered sex offender clustering in the city of Phoenix. And if I can start off with some introductions, to the right of me is Sergeant Barbara Francis. She is the supervisor sergeant over our sex offender notification unit for the Phoenix Police Department. She will be covering what the Police Department is required to do from a legal standpoint and also touch on what some of the legal requirements are for living requirements for registered sex offenders. Next to her is Ms. Donna Vittori. She is the Division Director for Adult Probation, and next to her is Saul, Mr. Saul Shun, the Deputy Chief of Community Supervision, also on adult probation. They will be covering what adult probation does when it comes to monitoring and addressing registered sex offenders. And next to Mr. Shun is Mr. Tom Remus, the Government Relations Director, and Mr. Remus will be able to provide any information on what legislation has been attempted to address clustering. So with that, we'll go ahead and start with Sergeant Francis to address some of these issues. And just to give you some background on some of the information, we have 14, over 14,000 registered sex offenders in the state of Arizona and monitor about 3,600 of them here in the city of Phoenix. Sergeant Francis.
As the chief mentioned, we do track and monitor, our responsibilities are tracking and monitoring registered sex offenders that live in the city of Phoenix. Those are all levels, there are basically four levels, and two of which, the level twos and threes are the highest ones. We send out communication, community notification in the form of a paper flyer to the residents that live within two blocks of where the offender is registered. We're responsible for tracking and monitoring the sex offenders that live in the city of Phoenix, and we, in order to do that, we actually go out and make personal verification of the addresses. We use probation and parole as a means of that notification, or that verification also, since they have more contact with them on a regular basis. The other things we do on the reference, the transient sex offenders, which they're allowed to register as transient or homeless, if they don't have a residence to actually live in, we, in order to, we can call them, we use probation and parole for that also for notification, or for verification. And we actually take it a step further, and we enter what's called a file stop, which when somebody runs an individual through our system, our computer system, an alert will come up to the officer that says this person is a transient, and we ask that the officers send us information back that says they made contact with them to verify that they're still in the area that they're supposed to be living in, and if not, we use it as tracking if they get stopped. For instance, if they're registered here in downtown area and we see them all the time, or they get contacted in North Phoenix somewhere on a regular basis, that's grounds for us to start doing an investigation to see where they are actually living. The other things that we do is that we coordinate with other officers and other agencies throughout the state and throughout the nation, and make sure that these offenders are in compliance, not only here, but if we get information that they've moved out of the state or out of the county, that they are in compliance where they are. We investigate failure to register reports, so if that offender, we find out is not in compliance, we start an investigation to submit for charges here in Maricopa County for failure to register, which is a Class IV felony. And a big responsibility that we have besides all that is to make sure that the flyers are sent out in a timely manner as best that we can. But as of 2007, we, and as a result of some other issues that came up, we did start doing electric monitoring, or changed the, the statute was changed so that we had more teeth, basically, to hold sex offenders accountable for electronic monitoring. Right now, it's a Class IV felony if they don't abide by the electric monitoring. If they cut it off, or if they fail to charge it, or they throw it out, or whatever they do with it, it's a Class IV felony. Also, there's a thousand foot, it's known by the thousand-foot rule, it's called unlawful residency, that sex offender, level three sex offenders meeting certain criterias, they cannot live within 1,000 feet from a school or daycare center. That's what I have.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for this opportunity. Just to talk a little bit about in general what the population of probation is and what we do with the sex offenders. We have about 32,000 people under the jurisdiction of the court that we were actively supervising at this time. There's about 50,000 total probationers, but about 32,000 that we are supervising. We have about 20,000, about 2,250 or so sex offenders that we actively supervise that are out in the community in Maricopa County. About 50% of those do live in Phoenix, so when you're talking about that 3,600 number, about a third of those are probation. The other ones could be parole, or the other ones could be, a lot of them are people who've gone to Department of Corrections, who have come out of Department Corrections and have already done their time and under no supervision. Just kind of demographics of our sex offender population, the average age is 44, most of them are white and male, 25% of them are over 56. We have both what's standard and intensive probation. About 85% of the population of the sex offenders are on standard probation, 15%, which is about roughly 300, are on intensive probation. One of our two biggest issues with this population is residence, is getting them, you know, under residence, and also employment. When the legislation that said you couldn't allow more than 10% in a multi-dwelling commercial, I mean, area that's owned residential, that legislation went out, became non-effective in January of 2011. We've continued to do that for two reasons. Number one, we thought it was good practice, but number two, we also anticipated that legislation coming back, which it hasn't done, but we continue to do that. So, we follow that 10% rule. So, we have, one of the things we work very hard at is trying to keep sex offenders from being homeless, because once they're homeless, then their recidivism rate does go up. So we work hard on that. I think presently we have, I think, around 12 that are homeless. So if you look at our big population of it, it's not a lot. Once they are homeless, we do go to the court, we do modify on that they be put on GPS while they are homeless until they get a residence. Once they get a residence, then within 30 days after they got the residence, we then get the GPS taken off if it's not statutory required by their crime. So, we have, in GPS, we have about, we have about 200 probationers a month that are on GPS at one given time. So, thank you.
I have a question, because I'm not sure I heard you correctly. Do you monitor people coming out of prison that have served their sentence, or are these people that are coming out of jail and, could you explain?
Absolutely, thank you. Most of the people we monitor, most have not gone to prison.
Have not gone to prison.
Correct. Many of them have done a jail sentence as a part of their probation. So for example, they may get lifetime probation. 74% of the sex offenders on probation are on lifetime probation.
Okay.
So, most of them then have got probation, got some jail. We do have some that have gone to prison on one count, in another count, they've got probation, so when they come out of prison, they're on probation. Most of the ones going to prison come out are on parole.
Right.
Okay? For 15% of their time, you know, if they got 10-year sentence, they're going to come out on parole sometimes for 15% of that time.
And how do you determine the 10% and where they live? You said only 10% could live in a certain area.
Multi-dwelling, multi-dwelling is two residents contained, so an apartment complex. Through the offices, we have one position that's dedicated to just looking into this and doing residence for sex offenders, and checking to make sure that the density in an apartment complex or whatever is not too much, and working on trying to get them housing.
Okay, thank you.
Oh, you're welcome.
I have, I have several questions. What I heard is a level three sex offender can, has to be 1,000 feet away from a school or children, or what did I hear?
Yep, it's, there's a criteria that they have to meet in order for that.
Okay. Can you explain to me the different levels? And I would like to know the different levels, I think I know, but the different levels, what's required of them? Because a level one could be completely different from what's required in a level three, but still, in a dwelling, if there are two sex offenders, it could be a level one and a level three within, that's where I'm getting confused. And I also want to know, in the dwelling, if there are kids in an apartment complex, how does that work? Thank you.
I'll explain the level part, and then, there are several, there are different levels, and the way that the levels are determined is based on a risk assessment, which is a standardized questionnaire that we fill out. Based on their score, they're put in a range, and that range is determined by what, that level is determined by the range that they're in, score-wise. The responsibilities on the sex offenders isn't any different on any level. They all have to register, they all have to register when they move, and they're mandated by law for that. As far as sex offenders who are level three, that's the only ones that are mandated if they fit into a criteria, a specific criteria, and there are three or four different criterias that they have to fall under. Those are the only ones that are mandated to not being allowed to live within 1,000 feet of the school. As far as kids and where they can live, we can't, the statute doesn't allow us to say where they can and cannot live. If they are in supervision, either parole or probation, those are the agencies that can say where they can and cannot live.
So I'm going to go level three because I'm just thinking. So if I'm a level three sex offender, and I live in an apartment complex that has children, it's okay?
As long as they're not on supervision, yes.
Okay.
And can I, may I add something to that also? As an example that I give a lot in the talks that I have, to us, working with the sex offenders in the registration and doing the risk assessment, to us, it doesn't make a difference what level they are, because you can have an individual that has no criminal history, the only criminal history they have is this one offense, and you can have somebody that has a criminal history of burglary or drugs or something else, and the same conviction, and the person with the, with the no other criminal history can actually be a lower level than the person that has more criminal history, because those are, that's one criteria, one of 19 different criteria that we look at when we fill out the questionnaire. So, we don't look at it as any different, as more severe or the other. The only thing that makes a difference is if we, if we're mandated by statute to notify the community.
I was at the door of one of my constituents who came to me with a brochure, six brochures, and said, and pointed the houses and said, "These are sex offenders. I have my granddaughter living with me. I'm afraid to let her go outside." And he, I mean, they were definitely crimes, like sex offenses involving three-year-olds. He said he'd brought it to the community action officer, and they said, "Well, they're here lawfully, there's nothing we can do." He honestly, I think, was looking for what training was available, what should he do as a responsible guardian to reduce risk to his family? I mean, he asked me, you know, "Would you want to live in this situation? I'm very nervous for my child's safety." I was very dissatisfied with the response I got, that I should do nothing. And it, I think it's not surprising that these brochures, I mean, it's a real emotional response, and people care about their loved ones, and they're just not satisfied with what they're getting, so.
Chairman Norakowski and Councilwoman Gallego. Yes, a lot of it
Yes, a lot of it is, people don't understand the different offenses and the fact they get flyers, and it does make everybody a little apprehensive. The one thing we can do is Sergeant Francis goes out to a lot of community meetings to explain just the process, and to explain the different levels, and to be able to tell them, you know, give them some information, just to think about, safety information, just, you know, background, things for them to think about, and hopefully, give them enough information to put them at ease. But we are, the unit, and Sergeant Francis, I know has done it several times, more than happy to go out to any community gathering that you may have.
What are some of the recommendations we offer to parents and guardians who live in situations like this?
One of the things when, with Councilwoman, when I, first thing that came to mind when you said that the person gave you the flyers, one of the things that we don't do is send out a flyer that says this person moved. So, a lot of times, people will bring those, bring those to our attention, that they're getting all these flyers, but my advice to them is to actually check the DPS website to see if the person's still there. A lot of times, they will get the flyers, and they're very transient, a lot of times. Transient meaning that they move from a registered, an address from one place to the next, and they're not there very long, most of the times. So, I advise them to keep up with the DPS website and check there. And I, the way that I address it is, or the way that we address it is, mostly, it's, I wouldn't say common sense, but it's, the concerns are real, I would not want to, at least we know they're there. And secondly, that you wouldn't let your kid go out and play on the street corner, you wouldn't let them go on the freeway. It's one of those things where you have to be diligent in watching your kids while they're out there. Just because there is a sex offender that's living down the street, doesn't mean that there isn't one that we haven't caught yet, or that's already doing something. And we suggest that if they do have concerns, or will, or concerns, or anything, we will check, I give my number out all the time, I will check to see if that person's on probation or parole. The best contact is to contact their probation or parole officer, because they have more leeway and restrictions that they can place on the individual. The second thing that we do is, I actually go out there and I meet with all the individuals or the groups, and once they get an understanding of how the assessment is completed, and how the risk levels are determined, and what to look for when they do get the flyer, and how to read and interpret the flyer, then they get a better understanding, and they become more at ease when that happens.
In this particular case, I did ask the commander to pull some of the data and help me interpret it, and it appeared that many of them had left.
Mm-hmm.
Would it be possible to do a pilot with one community that, where this is an issue we see over and over again, and try communicating when people do leave? Because, I mean, people are keeping stacks of these, and it's really, I think, keeping parents up at night?
I, I think, cost-wise, I think it'd be probably, what I, what I think would work better, and this is my personal opinion, what I think would work better is if I had contact with the CAOs, and I could give that information to the CAOs, and then they can pass on that information during their meetings, because it is very costly for us to send out notification to, just for regular notifications when these people move, because every time they move, we have to send out a notification.
Yeah, that's a requirement per statute, to make notification on definitely level-threes. We choose, as a city, to do it for level-twos also.
Twos and threes?
Twos and threes are mandated. Are mandated from statute. We choose to go two-block radius to make sure we cover everything, and that is quite costly for us to do, and time-consuming, and we're making notifications if somebody's in a particular neighborhood, and they move from your neighborhood and to a different neighborhood, we make notifications of the new neighborhood, but you're right, we don't go and send messages back saying, "Hey, they moved," because that's twice the work and twice the notification. It's very difficult to do, but I think that is a good option to be able to try to let the community action officers know, so that way, they can, you know, they, I know they send out a lot of times newsletters to their, to their areas, and maybe they can let people know, but the best route is the DPS website, because that is what is updated, that they are, they regulate and they oversee the entire sex offenders for the state. So, that is updated a lot, not more than anything else, because they have to register through, not only the county, we monitor them, but they have to register with the state, and we communicate with them. So, that's probably the best thing, and if I can just hit on one more thing when it comes to the crime, because that is something else that we also cover, is that we, we, every time we're approached on some of the, we have a lot of sex offense or notifications in our neighborhood, we never have an increase of a crime rate, we haven't had a significant increase in any crime rate, let alone sex offenses, when they're showing us all the different, you know, notifications that might be registered sex offenders. So, that's something we, we haven't been able to show.
I think most of the cases with which I'm familiar are in areas where I think internet is probably not a great option for communicating with folks.
And that's why maybe the CAO is the best, best way to get out there to the community, because they're out there more.
I need a question about the legislation. Most of the neighborhoods I'm thinking about are not multifamily, so they're residential. Why, why is it different concentrations are perhaps we're trying to avoid in multifamily versus a single residential street?
You know, I'm not sure why legislation just focused on the multi-dwelling residents. I don't know why, yeah.
Chairman Noakowski, Councilwoman Gallego, perhaps I could speak to that. About eleven years ago, the city of Phoenix had councilmember concerns about clustering that was going on, and specifically, at that time, there was an apartment complex where there were a number of registered sex offenders who were on probation. And as we tried different methods to address clustering, and when we went to the legislature, we found that there were constitutional issues, because there are two components of this, and the experts at the table could probably give more detail to it, but you have the registered sex offenders who have been released from prison, who have served their time, and they have restrictions on distance requirements. But then you also have those individuals who are on parole or on probation. And in those two instances, there can be more stringent restrictions placed on them. In Maricopa County, as they have stated, they were supportive back in 2005, when Senator Dean Martin worked with the city of Phoenix to put in place the restriction that there could be no more than ten percent registered sex offenders on probation within multi-housing. And it did address the one apartment complex that was seen as problematic. As Maricopa County has stated, even though that provision sunsetted, and that was part of an agreement with the administrative offices of the courts, and probation, and other stakeholders who are a part of that agreement, Maricopa County has taken it upon themselves to keep those restrictions in place as a standard practice, just to make sure that within multi-housing there isn't stronger concentrations. I think one of the issues that might be out there is multi-housing oftentimes has lower rent, perhaps, than individuals who might be moving into single-family dwellings, and so sometimes you do see more of a clustering effect, because you have folks who are coming out of prison or on parole, and they might not have the financial means to go into single homes that might have some more distances around them.
What I'd like to do is, I'm not sure if you're finished with the presentation, and we have one individual out there in the audience that would like to speak, and then maybe after that.
I do have additional questions.
Yeah. So, we have Mr. Trippken. Our councilmember Trippken.
Thank you, thank you, Councilman Noakowski and councilmembers. We've got, I work for Centralers on Shelter Services, and we've got sort of a dilemma, and I'll be very brief, but as you know, we've got an indoor facility, which is the main dormitory, we've got our men's overflow shelter, which now is being capped by the county, and we're, it's going away over the course of the next several months. It's at a hundred and eighty people, I think it is, a month right now, we're going down by twenty a month for the next several months. Then we've got a parking lot, which is, the parking lot is basically funded, most of the cost is porta-potties, and also about $400,000 of off-duty police, which we have on-site, because we have the men's overflow shelter. In other words, they're, they're running, they're controlling the men's overflow shelter, and the parking lot is, is an extra benefit. Sooner or later, I know there are sex offenders in our parking lot, there's no question, and I don't know if these people have any, if you have any sense of how, of numbers, or if you, you know, I, most of these people are people, we don't know really who they are, and that's sort of the, the point of the, of the thing, is, of the parking lot, is to try to, try to take a group of people and, I don't like the word containment, but that's the best word I can find, as I'm standing here thinking about it, trying to, trying to keep them in a, in a safe environment, for, safe for themselves and safe for the community. Sooner or later, I think that addressing what the sex offender population in that group is, and what's going to happen when that facility closes, because it's going to close at this point when the men's overflow shelter closes, what happens then, I, I don't know. I feel sort of like we're in a dilemma. We do not take care of sex offenders at CAS formally. We have to prioritize veterans, and, you know, families, and children, and other, all sorts of things. This is not one of the priorities, as you can understand how that evolved, but I don't, I don't know what the future holds, and I just wanted to, I guess, sort of bookmark that point for you. That's all, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Trippken. Any other additional questions?
Yes, do you have a question? So, when some, he mentioned that, that you have priorities, veterans in other areas you're serving, where would be the best place for a sex offender who is released and doesn't have a home to go?
I think the best place for a sex offender to live is with supportive members.
But do we, I mean, is there adequate services for individuals who are leaving the correctional system?
For homeless?
Yes.
No, there are none.
What is available?
We, faith-based organizations have been very helpful, so we utilize them a lot. We have some transitional housing, you know, that a lot of times, private individuals are providing, and those are places we look to help us.
Do you feel like there are adequate services now?
No, there are none.
Are we actively doing anything to, what would you be recommendations to this group, to what we should be doing?
You know, the ideal place for a homeless sex offender, obviously, is to move them into, out of homelessness as quickly as possible. So, any place that we could locate temporary housing, we have found that if it is more in an industrial or commercial kind of an area, so then it keeps the sex offenders away from the quote residential places, would be very helpful, if we could just house them temporarily, get them back on their feet, and get them moved into a more permanent situation.
Are most of the programs in the boundaries of the city of Phoenix right now?
A good portion of them are, yes, absolutely.
We often feel, I think, we are doing more than our share for the, and it seemed that we have a disproportionate, in comparison to our population, number of the sex offenders are within the city boundaries, so. Like with many other issues, we will have to continue to talk with our neighbors in other cities about sharing the community problems and solving this together. Wanted to go back to the previous discussion about apartments. We have, at least in my district, some multi, or single-family homes that are just as affordable as multifamily, and so I guess I would encourage, to the extent possible, that we apply that standard based on distance and not based on multifamily versus single-family, because I think if it, protection is justified in multifamily, in similarly dense, single-family residential neighborhoods, or at least not similarly dense, close, that that is something we ought to look at for all of our residents, not just multifamily. Because it is hard to be standing on someone's door and have them point to every house and have a brochure to match. And I would also love it if we could talk to DPS about maybe posting when people have left, so that if I, I do go, if I am going to a community, and I know they're going to be asking about this, at least I can look up and have data to share about departures, so that if people are only worrying about, about situations that are true, and that we have data to give folks when some of the people have, have moved on, I think that might matter to our parents and grandparents. Thank you.
I have some questions. So, I want to go, what can we do legislatively, since whatever right here was pushing through, and it's considered unconstitutional? Because I do feel, and I'm just going to be real, I am a mother, and I have a responsibility as sitting here, is to protect not only children, but the community across, just as all of us here are, are to do that, and do it in the best interest. So, I find it, it's very difficult to hear when a, as a mother, and protecting, and young ones, that if there are six sex offenders in my neighborhood, and I am not given the tools, or resources are not given to me to be proactive within my neighborhood, it's really disheartening, because I'm coming to someone that is looked at as to be able to give me help. And so, we have to do a better job in delivering our education out in our community, and be able to give them the tools to be proactive and protect themselves, and protect their family. I have a home where it's a private drive, a lot of transients come back and, back and forth, who knows what's going on. Very late at night, when I come home, I see, I have to be careful where my area, I have lights everywhere, but I do allow my kids to play out in the front, because that is a quality of life, of my family, to be able to be safe and secure, and be able to, to be active. And that's the type of community I want across this whole city. So, we, I just feel like we're doing a good job, but now we have to do better, in the sense of educating our community. So, in that speech, I want to know what can we do legislatively, in particular, in single-family areas? And what does that look like? Because most sex offenders, if they don't have a home, they go back to the family, and the family takes them, which they should, because it's their kid, you know, it's family. Some don't, but normally, they go and they register there, because if there's no other address, that's what they ask for, they ask to register there. So, I would like to know, and, and I know District Eight is one of the high clustering areas, I want to say two, four is the second. So, I'm concerned about it, and would like to know, what can we do?
Chairman Noakowski, Councilwoman Pastor, we've tried numerous efforts over the years of a legislative approach, and as was discussed today, some of the challenges are the constitutional issues, and whether or not the legislature is the place to address some of these items, because they might or might not fall into the legal realm. We, I, I'll offer up to you a couple of suggestions, but some other things, I think, came up today are equally valuable, and that is offering more education and information to neighborhoods. And I think as our police department offered, perhaps doing some more outreach through the community action officers would be one approach. Working with the Department of Public Safety about how to make sure that their information is easily accessible, especially if folks don't have internet connection, or is, have the ability to pull it up to see if there have been moves. When we go back to the state legislative process, as I mentioned, some of the challenges are registered sex offenders who have served their sentence, they're still registered sex offenders, but those individuals have pretty much their rights back, and we cannot put additional, the courts have said, we cannot put additional restrictions on them, except for the distancing between daycare centers and others. Some of the things that we can look at doing, though, is those individuals, perhaps on probation and on parole, to look to see if there might be some other opportunities to make sure that there's some accountability or information sharing to address those concerns. So, one item, we might look to put back in state law, the item that Senator Martin worked with the city of Phoenix on about number in multi-housing, and the percentage there. Even though Maricopa County takes it upon themselves to keep to the ten percent, we could look to see if we want to put it in state law, and if there might be the ability to do a lower percentage. Additionally, we could work with our law department and look to see if, with single-family homes, if, how that would stand up to any sort of legal challenge, if we did look to put distancing requirements- if, how that would stand up to any sort of legal challenge, if we did look to put distancing requirements on that. I think, and, and we're open to those creative ideas to look at. I think the city about 10 years ago worked with ASTU to put together a very large study on this subject. And as they went through a lot of these topics, they just found the balance was very difficult with what is protected under the Constitution. As you mentioned earlier, a lot of, what, what I think corrections and probation like to see are individuals going back with their family, so they have a support system. And I think sometimes that could provide challenges as well, as far as where they're located. But I know that Maricopa County, at least, when it comes to probation, has worked hard, and they have some good statistics of where they've placed people back to. How many are working full-time, how many are meeting certain criteria that they have set up internally. And, and we could look to see if there's maybe a legislative way to track that. But for better or worse, sometimes legislative changes aren't all, the only solution, sometimes, to that. But we're open to any suggestions.
Well, it's yes and no, because it has to do, right now, we're talking about protection, of protecting ourselves. I would like, I don't know, Councilwoman, the distancing sounds to me like we look at that, and since it's only Level Three that has distancing, right? Okay, so.
I think that would be a huge help in the, the area that I'm thinking of. That same, if it's single block, it's much over 10% now.
You know, I, I want to thank Greg for coming up and telling us about the shelter changes that's happening. I had the privileges of serving as Phoenix representative on the county homeless coalition. And I will tell you, there has been a significant shift in what the feds are funding. And when you said you rely a lot on transitional housing, that has become a very low priority for the feds. It is now to serve emergency housing, but it is primarily for families and veterans. And there are so many of those, it pretty much eliminates anybody beyond them. I, I would, I know the chances are very, very slim. But is there any possibility that as a group, we could go to the legislature or other places and ask for funding for transitional housing? That you could identify areas that would be safer, and see if we could possibly get some funding to help you house these people? Then you would have more control over where they're living and keep them out of neighborhoods. I know it's, it's probably a long shot at the legislature, but perhaps we could gather together and, and look for some grants. Because this is a real public safety issue, and, and I know families are very worried about it. I never let my kids play in the front yard. I don't want the grandkids go to the neighborhood park without supervision. So I think it's a real situation that we need to recognize. And I think, based on what Greg said, chances are it's going to worsen, because homeless just don't stay in one area, they scatter. And all the other cities have begun to participate in, in housing and, and different programs for this population. City of Phoenix still has a lion's share. It's the easiest to disappear in the city of Phoenix. And with a transitory population like this, you don't know if they're in the house next to you, if they're homeless living in the alley behind you, or if they're being supervised closely. Because I suspect you don't always get notified right away when they move. And I'm very concerned, and so I would like to throw that out as a possibility that you could pursue.
Just one last comment. I mean, we, too, also remember, two-thirds of probably your sex offender population in Phoenix is not being supervised by probation. We have just about a third of them. So, you know, you do also have, like we talked about, people getting released from prison with no kind of supervision, people on parole. You also get people who move from other states that have committed a sex offense. But when they come to Arizona, it's a sex offense that you'd have to register here, so they have to register. So you do have a lot of them, a lot of those people moving in too.
I have a couple of questions. First of all, the process, when a sex offender is let go from jail, what's the process there? Do they have to give you an address? Or do we just release individuals out of prison to the neighborhood?
Yes, whether they're, when they're being released from incarceration, or just being newly sentenced. They have to give us an address immediately. And as Sal had mentioned, we have the housing coordinator, and that's the first stop for us on, when they're on probation, is to check density for the multi-dwelling. If it passes density, probation officer then has to verify that residence. And they're looking for things like proximity to schools, children living in the home, all those kinds of things, depending on the conditions that were imposed by the court. So that's how that works. And then we have our teams, and they're, they're verifying residents all the time. They're out in the community daily. So we do know pretty quickly when someone has moved, or if they fail to register when they move to a new address. We, and then if they fail to register, we also work with law, law enforcement very closely and notify them immediately. And we'll issue warrants pretty fast if we can't find a sex offender.
Now, six years ago, we looked into this, and we were finding out that a lot of the sex offenders were actually registering at the homeless shelter. Is that true today?
No, no. Several years ago, when funding for the shelter became an issue, we stopped sending Level Twos and Level Threes cannot go to the shelter. That was at the request of CAS, so they are not to be registering there.
The other thing, I was, I was listening to my colleagues talk about the clustering within neighborhoods, but I was thinking about zip code areas also. I mean, if you look at the clustering, they're really by zip codes, and a lot of it is the inner-city. What I like to do is see if there's some way, some way to look into the clustering within zip code areas and eliminating that. So if we take it to the state, then we can look at zip codes. The other thing is, we, we here at the city of Phoenix is really thinking outside the box, using technology and, and informing people through social media, but also robocalls. A lot of individuals do have phones, and it, it costs like a penny or so for a robocall. And if there is a person that moves out, maybe that'd be more cost-effective, where we can actually call a certain area of town saying, "You got notified on May blah, blah, blah. This person no longer lives in your neighborhood." I think the more we can spread that word out in a cost-effective way, it'd be great. I mean, coffee with the cops, or, or police officers are out there in community meetings. But to be very honest with you, a lot of our residents have two different jobs, and they have children at home, and some of these meetings aren't well-attended. And if, it's probably less than 1% of that area actually goes to these types of meetings. So we need to think differently in getting that information out. The other thing I was thinking about is, how do we look for ways, exactly what Councilmember Williams was talking about, working with the county and the state and at the federal level, to really put an end to all this? If you're a sex offender released from jail, you're basically released with no support system. You were in, in prison, you had three meals a day, you were taken care of, you had housing. All of a sudden, you're just dumped on the city streets with no support, no counseling, and no system to support that. I think that we really need to look at being proactive and looking at the state, the feds, and the county and ourselves, and creating some type of system that helps that transition period. And if there is a person that needs help, then, then we, we actually know who those individuals are. So those are just some suggestions that I'd like you all to look into. I like, Tom, if you can really look at how we can advocate for more funding. I know that this is probably a low priority for most people, but when you think about it, sex offenders within our neighborhoods, we need to actually protect our neighbors. It's a public safety issue. At the same time, how can we be proactive and help those individuals through that transition of their lives also? Any other questions?
Also, we ought to say thank you, because this work is very important. And a successful outcome here is good for all of our communities, so thank you for what you're doing. And I did want to ask, who is going to follow up with DPS about making it easier to find out information about departures? Wonderful, thank you.
Can I just make a note on that? If they're, they update their system every night. So, for example, when I go out to make my meetings, I actually, before I leave, a minute or two before I leave to go to that meeting, I also check DPS's site to make sure that the information for that zip code, actually, is what I do instead of that area, to make sure that I have the current information at that particular time. So I understand that the internet and the computer usage is a, is a problem, but that's probably the best and fastest way to get the information. We are also going, DPS is changing their system over, and it's going to be available to the state and to include probation and parole. And they're using a company called Watch System, but the program is called Offender Watch, and that's real-time. When, if somebody registers, they know they register, and they can contact us through email or through the computer. So it's real-time. I click a button, and they get the information right away. So that's going to be more effective for us and more time-efficient for us to use. So I will contact DPS and find out that. I know they're in a transition, not making excuses for them, but they're in transition to get that system up on, and, and running. So I will ask them about that also, or bring that, your concerns to that.
But it would be good to know if people could find departures. Because I think right now you can query who's there, but not who used to be, and for folks who collect brochures.
Right, right.
That will be useful information, that they can remove some brochures from their collection.
Right.
Councilmember Williams?
Chief, police has the new software package, and where they link to neighborhoods. And I know that so many neighborhoods, almost 500 neighborhoods within the city of Phoenix are now linked in, and COs or police department from somewhere sends out regular message updates, notices, whatever they think pertain. Couldn't you somehow send out a message or to the COs who could then enter it?
Post it there, yeah.
Post it there, and then as DPS is updated, give them that link and just do it, like every three months to remind people so that new ones coming on would know? Could we do that?
Couldn't definitely look into that.
That just seems like an easy way, because that's a neighborhood, and then they usually put it in their newsletter. So if someone doesn't have a computer, they get the newsletter, and then at least they'd have the information.
Yeah, we'll look into that.
Any other questions? I really.
May I just offer a last comment to kind of address some of the issues? Anything that we can do in probation, we're more than happy to help with that education piece, and, you know, help families understand, parents understand. Absolutely, we would be more than happy to assist with that.
You know, on behalf of this, this subcommittee, I'd really like to thank you. I know it's a hard issue. It's a hard topic, and, and it's something that we need to bring out to the public, and we need to educate people on. And thank you for coming down, and especially our guest from the county, Sergeant Francis. Thank you for your hard work in continuing this. But I, I believe that we need to address something on a, on a, an agenda in the future, is that overflow shelter, on the public safety aspect of it. And we'll probably bring you back to talk about how this would affect the sex offenders, and how that would push people out into our neighborhoods and stuff. So we'll probably put that in a future agenda item, the whole overflow and how that would affect public safety. And once again, thank you, Chief, and thank you all for coming up.
So with that, we have item number eight. We're looking at our community policy-serving grant process. Thank you all for being here.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the subcommittee. We're going to provide some brief information on our COPS grants. With me today is our supervisor of our grants unit, Ms. Stacy Osborne-Fry, and Commander Mike Kurtenbach. They're the, the lead on this topic, and I'll turn it over to Stacy.
The item pretty much speaks for itself. I guess we're looking for any kind of questions that you might have. Our grant process for the police department is pretty all-inclusive. We're constantly looking for grants. We realize the timing of grants is usually open January, February for federal. When they open for state, local, every week, we're looking for, we look at all the websites, usually three or four times a week, looking for anything new. And as far as the COPS grants goes, the report itself talks about the grants that we applied for in 2013, the ones that we got, the one that we didn't, and then our process for 2014. We recently had a conference call with the COPS office to discuss the aspect of not receiving the COPS hiring grant. And a lot of what we learned there was that they have a computer software system that you feed the application into, and they grade it per box that you checked. So the narratives that we put into the application were not graded at all. I'm not sure what kind of questions you might have, but we'll be happy to try to answer them for you.
My question is that, how could this happen? I mean, we've been doing this grant process for years, and I've been on the council for seven years. I know we've been applying within those seven years, and we have a great staff. I mean, we have lobbyists in, in DC that are actually looking for those different grant opportunities. We have our mayor and council members that actually go out and they talk to directors and department heads to make sure that this process is, is being done. And I'm not sure if we have those experts, or how could something like this actually happen, right?
Mr. Chairman, we've actually been very successful in our grant process. As the CCR notes, and as some of our grants from your history, we just recently got a grant to hire 15 SROs in our school. We recently got a grant last year for our BEST team, which is our business economic stabilization team, which was a micro grant. So we're very successful in getting them. With federal government, there's been some tightening of the budget and some other things. So the competition is very tight. We applied for some additional grants this last year. We weren't successful in some of them, but we will continue to try. So I think overall, on the big scheme of things, the city of Phoenix is doing pretty well in our grant process. And we, as a police department, are also doing pretty well. We also have some technology grants. One of the things that we do on a daily basis, and Ms. Frye talked about it, is we are actively seeking those grants. We work with Tom and his team on a regular basis to make sure that we are all in coordination. In fact, we meet on a regular basis. So can we do better? Probably. But again, the competition is very tight nationwide, and we are an active participant in it.
Yes, Tom? Chair Nowakowski, as the chief mentioned and Ms. Osborne mentioned, I think staff did a great job on this particular grant, strong narrative. But I think what we learned from the debriefing that we received on November 3rd from the Department of Justice COPS office, some of the, the takeaways were that there were 1,296 applications for the COPS grant, and only 215 received funding. So that was 17%. We scored low on some areas, and I think that was interesting for us to hear. And I think, as Ms. Osborne mentioned, we found out that sometimes the narrative isn't always considered. It's almost used as backup to some of the boxes that you check. So I think we also, one of the takeaways were, we should work to make sure that we're checking the right boxes of where the focus of that agency would like to put priorities, and make sure that as we check those, that our narrative matches that. So I think we'll make sure, as we're looking to the future, that when we see the administration and the federal agencies, if they're looking at certain priorities, we'll work with our federal lobbying team to make sure that they're reaching out and talking, and making sure that we're hitting those hot-button topics. But I do think, as the chief mentioned, this was a competitive year. I think law enforcement around the country are seeing some challenges when it comes to staffing, and it was very competitive. But we've learned lessons from this, this last attempt, and we know that we're going to work hard next year.
Any questions?
Usually when you apply for federal grants, and each administration or each year changes, because it depends on who's administering the grant, and who is looking or adjusting to processes and procedures. Normally, they have a time period where you can get expertise, guidance, in, before you're going to apply for the grant, or before the RFP is going to be released. At any one point, was it ever, did we ever know that they are now not looking at the narrative, that they're looking at the, at the point system? Reason why I know these things, because I apply for grants all the time in, in my other world. And so there's a whole process that goes along with the federal grants. And so how did we, I guess, miss the boat, in the sense of not realizing that we had to? to make sure as many boxes, or however we did it, and that the narrative really wasn't going to be the strong numbering area or rubric being used?
We learned that at the debriefing call. That was not given to anybody that we were aware of, and I do talk to other agencies. I research everything that I can regarding the grants when they open, and that was not told to us until we got to the debriefing call. And please keep in mind that some of the checkboxes are, will this resolve the issue? And the issue that we were addressing was homicide. We can't check that box.
Okay, so...
As much as we would like to.
Probably, they were looking at sustainability in the long run. Once you got the spending, will it end it? And then, yeah, homicide would not work.
Yeah, that was one of the issues on the application that was given preferential treatment. So, we did look at the items on the application that provided a little bit of an extra in the application, and we went after every one of those that we could. Hiring a veteran, giving preferential treatment to hiring a veteran, and the program that we decided to go after were all preferential treatments in the application process.
Well, thank you for doing it, because I know how difficult it is to apply for these things and how competitive it is also. So, thank you, we've learned, and we can move forward now that we've learned.
Chairman Noakowski, Councilwoman Pastor, I was going to mention that, as you brought up, on a lot of grants, they do have some webinars or other items for competitive grants. And I know when those opportunities arise, city staff take advantage of them. Sometimes with these regularly-issued grants, they don't always do that. And I think on the COPS, that's one of those unique ones that they might not offer some of those opportunities that we see otherwise.
Thanks. Any other questions? Well, my concern is that we have experts in DC that we hire, and we pay some good money for them to represent us there. I just want to make sure that they're doing their job and that we're using them to their fullest capacity. And also, if we can come up with a strategy in the future where we can use all those tools that we have, and even ourselves as councilmembers, if you see that there's a plus or a minus, use us when you can, and when you don't want to use us, you need to tell us that we can actually hurt the process instead of help the process. And I think we need to work as a team wherever you can use us effectively, and at the same time, make sure that we do that Team Phoenix approach where we use all the resources that we have. Thank you.
We did just, just so that, you know, we did just finish up an application for a research and development grant, and we submitted it to Holland and Knight on Friday. They got back to me Monday morning, said it looks great.
Oh, great.
We are submitting applications.
All right. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
And then we have, I'm sorry, we have Leonard that has some comments, I'm sorry. Leonard Clark.
Hi there. Thank you, Councilpersons Williams, Noakowski, Pastor, and Gallego. My name is Leonard Clark. I'm here with a group representing, it's called People Against Clergy and Politicians Who Preach Hate. I'm just saying that because we've got to pack up their file on the clerks, so I don't want to violate any rules. But I'm here because, first of all, I want to thank you, because I know you guys are always here, and our officers and everybody, people trying to work together to make our city a nicer place to live and a safer place to live. I'm just here out of concern, and some of my friends in our group are concerned that in the application for grants, that maybe our officers, the people in charge of that, we've been reading, of course, about the president. Our president is going to be sending a certain money. Hopefully, Congress will approve for body-worn cameras throughout the nation. And of course, we're all, a lot of cities are hurting throughout the country for money right now. So, we're hoping that this COPS grant, which I think is excellent, you know, may not exactly pertain to that, but I'm hoping that we can really, really, really push, be aggressive in getting a body-worn camera program, as evidenced by the United States Department of Justice and their recommendations from 2010 about how to implement such a program. And of course, this would probably, even though I'm not sure if this would be in the purview of our police department, maybe more city prosecutor to look for any types of grants that would help us to hire and find a way to get independent special prosecutors for any trying of alleged felonies by officers, and not to mean anything bad, but that way, because a lot of people are losing faith in our justice system, not just in Phoenix, and it hurts us all, and it makes it dangerous for all when people feel that justice cannot be obtained. And I'm just hoping you as our, not only our elected officials, but I would say our moral leaders, would strongly recommend to the council and the mayor to come out now, because everybody is asking about this, for body-worn cameras in your grant program, and in general, just find a way to do it, and an independent or independent special prosecutor, not the county attorney, to look at alleged felonies committed by police against civilians before a grand jury. So, I really appreciate you letting me speak. I appreciate the work that our officers do. I'm here because I want the system to survive, but we are really out of date, and I think Phoenix has always been number one. Why can't we be number one now and get something started, be ahead of everybody, where everybody will look to the city of Phoenix, our city as being a shining model? Thank you.
Thank you so much, Leonard. And are we applying for any of those body camera grants?
Actually, Mr. Chairman, members of the subcommittee, we are ahead of it. And Mike Kurtenbach, I'm glad he's here, because we applied about 18 months ago and had a grant, have a pilot program in the Maryville precinct, actually are on the cutting edge. He's doing a training session tomorrow in partnership with ASU. We're looked as a leader in this area. Now, we're hopeful that through the federal government, they've set aside some money, like $263 million, and I'm not quite sure how that will be applied nationwide for on-body cameras, but we certainly will be in the mix of that. And again, we have, and I'll turn it over to Mike to give some brief specifics on it, but we are out ahead of the curve. So, Mike?
Thank you, Chief. Mr. Chairman, members of the subcommittee, the Phoenix Police Department has had a body-worn camera program since April 15th of 2013 in the Maryville Police Precinct. In fact, the way we were able to roll out these cameras was in partnership and through funding provided by the Department of Justice Bureau of Justice Assistance under the Smart Policing Initiative. What is unique about this is we've seen camera programs rolled out throughout the nation, but through this partnership with ASU, our Dr. Charles Katz and his team have done a formal evaluation of our program. So, to that point, and to Chief Yano's point, we are the tip of the spear when it comes to providing best practices and policy recommendations for agencies across the country. And what Chief Yano referred to is a webinar that Dr. Katz and I will be hosting actually today, at noon today, and there are well over 270 agencies that have signed up to participate in that, to hear what we have to offer and those types of recommendations.
Well, thank you all for being those leaders and paving the road for other departments out there. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
All righty, we're on item number nine. We're going to be talking about the process of the presiding judge.
Thank you, Chairman Noakowski, and members of the subcommittee. I have with me today the acting chief presiding judge, Eric Jeffries. With the recent retirement of the previous chief presiding judge, Roxanne Songong, Mr. Jeffries is going to walk you through today the process that we'll be utilizing to select the next chief presiding judge.
Okay, good morning, councilmen and members of the committee. I just wanted to give you a brief verbal update on where we're at with the process of selecting the new chief presiding judge. We have put together the application, the one-page form that will go out in the advertisement. I also put together a timeline that would be an approximate timeline, but it should be, we should be able to follow this fairly closely within, I would think, a week or two of this timeline, maybe three at the most. The publication and application process, we've already identified the various advertising mediums that we're going to be publishing the advertisement in, so we'll be sending those out. We've already made arrangements for that to start December 15th, with the application process running through January 30th, which is a Friday at 5:00 PM. After the applications are gathered, on the 30th of January, in early February, the Judicial Selection Advisory Board will meet. They will determine at that point in time their first review of the applicants, and at that time also determine who they would interview. In later February, a few weeks from that point in time, to allow people, time to be notified that they'll be interviewed, to schedule interviews, then we would conduct through the Judicial Selection Advisory Board again those interviews, and then select the people that would be forwarded to you for the next meeting for the Public Safety and Veterans Subcommittee to meet here, in order for you to interview those candidates and make your recommendation at that point in time to the full council. So, that would be the process going through late February through Judicial Selection Advisory Board, probably in March to you at the Public Safety and Veterans Subcommittee, and then either late March or early April, probably at full council. So, that's what we were looking at for a timeline. We have the advertisement. I did, for your benefit, include a list of the members of the Judicial Selection Advisory Board and their contact information, so you would have that. So, this is a process that you will be actively participating in, and we look forward to getting those candidates to you as soon as we can by the close of the January 30th deadline.
Does anyone have any questions? No? Well, we appreciate the information. We look forward to the interviews. They're always interesting. You have the hard work of sorting through all the applicants and going through the process, but we have great faith, because you will always found the one that rose to the top and right at the Phoenix is very best. So, thank you. We look forward to hearing how it goes in January, how many applicants you have, and how the process is going, and then your return. So, thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
I think that takes us to the next item, which is the vehicle user fees. The reconsider, oh, we have to vote on the reconsideration first? Okay. All those in favor of reconsidering this item, please say aye.
Aye.
Pouse, motion carries. Now, we will have a short presentation and think about what the subject's about, and then ask questions.
Do you want me to just jump in?
Good morning. I understand this was presented last time, rather than a presentation. I'm here to answer any questions.
The reason why I asked for reconsideration is because I had received several calls regarding this item. And so, I just need further background as to why we shifted our way of doing our practice, and for it to be very clear as to what we were doing before and how we now have shifted to where we are today. Starting with the $7 fee, that my understanding is that we charged $7, and it was up to the discretion of commanders to decide if they were going to charge the fee or allow them to use the car. Am I correct, or am I off on it?
You're partially correct.
Okay.
If I can explain, maybe we can kind of...
That would probably be easier.
We've been providing police vehicles to the community for years. As Maryville precinct commander, I did it myself on many, many occasions. The charge is $7 per hour and 95 cents a mile. That fee has adjusted over the years, but it's stayed pretty consistent, as that is the direct cost of a vehicle for use, so where it's a recovery fee. As a precinct commander, depending on the situation, depending on the crime in the neighborhood, and depending on what is going on at that particular time, our commanders have had the discretion to allow a community group, a homeowner's association, a business, an apartment complex, whatever it may be due to crime issues, to have the use of a police car when they hire off-duty police officers. On occasion, we have not charged for that police car on a limited basis. One of the things with this reexamination of this issue is we're trying to get better uniformity and more consistency in how we apply that, so we're fair on all throughout the city as far as who gets a police vehicle not charged and who doesn't. Now, this issue came about for a lot of reasons, but there was a couple individuals that were allowing a longer period of time when it came to the allowing a use of a police vehicle for free. So, we reexamined it. We've come up with a couple different fee structures. The way the CCR is written and what our thought process is as a police department is we want to get as many vehicles out there as possible with a reasonable amount of price, so that we can have higher visibility policing in some of these high-crime areas. If an association or a business is hiring a police officer to work there in an off-duty capacity, typically they have a crime problem. If we can support that through the visibility of a police car, we'd like to do that. So, we've tried to make it more affordable for homeowner's associations and businesses to use a police vehicle.
And one of the reasons why I was concerned about this is because it was a discretion of, I guess, discretion of officers to determine if they could loan the car out for a short period of time. My concern is that for those neighborhoods that were requesting that, that could not afford it, but were asking, can you loan us a car for the, could afford the off-duty officer but not necessarily afford the car, and could do that for a week or week and a half for short term, I was concerned about those neighborhoods, what the unintended consequences would be because of the neighborhoods not being able to afford this type of program within their area. So, as I was asking questions, I wanted to know if there are scholarships or, and I'm not, I don't want to use the term grants, because we think of federal, state, or within our own system that help those, other than block watch, that helps those neighborhoods to provide that type of coverage within their neighborhood.
Specifically for a police car?
Uh-huh.
I'm not aware of any, and that's one of the things that we've moved this, why we moved this proposal forward, is when we have vehicles that are being transitioned out of our fleet, surplus vehicles, so to speak, we can charge a lower rate, makes it more affordable for some of those particular neighborhoods. So, that's one of the reasons why we moved this forward. The other thing is, is we've tightened this thing up as a police department, and we've, discretion is now at the patrol chiefs' level, so that we're consistent across the city. And what we'd like to do is, as this goes forward, take another look at this in about six months, and see if there's other adjustments we can make, so that we can, you know, serve the homeowner's associations as well as increase public safety.
Okay. And then my last question is, how many surplus cars do we have in total that we use for this program?
We're proposing a limited number per precinct. I don't know the answer of how many surplus cars.
Okay.
We have, Jeff's here, as far as he knows our fleet a little bit better, but as you are well aware, we've had some budget issues in the last five years, and we have been very, very stringent on purchasing vehicles, because it's a huge cost for the police department as it is for the city. So, we have some, we don't have a whole bunch, to answer that question.
And the way, Chairman Noakowski and Councilwoman Pastor, the way we structured the program was to start off small. We wanted to start off with basically one car per precinct. And then, as Joe said, we would come back, you know, every six months, or if the program grew to such a point where it seemed like something we wanted to expand, we could do that through the program budget process with your guidance and your direction at that point in time. But I think really, looking at the mileage that has been used historically in this program, I think one vehicle per precinct is probably enough to start it out with and kind of get our sense to where we are.
Is there a limit on how long a homeowner association or a business can rent? The...
No, I don't think there's a limit. As long as they're paying for the public service, what we can't do is give public service away for free. It's a violation of the gift clause. So, as long as there is a fee associated to that, we're good to go. So, there is no limit or expiration date on, you know, you've had it for a year, you can't have it anymore.
So, what I mean by that is, if there's only one car within the precincts, and this one homeowner association, for whatever reason, is using it constantly, and then you have another homeowner association in need of it, how do you, how do you, not necessarily put a limit or return, I guess it's kind of like a library book. You know, you rent it out for a while, and then you return it, and if somebody else needs it, gives them that opportunity to use it, and then...
You know, that's going to be discretion of the police chief.
All right.
And, you know, based on crime and what's occurring in that neighborhood at that time, I think that's relatively easy to do, as long as we're reasonable and applying it fairly across the board.
Thank you.
Chief, one of the things that our chief talks about is policing with a purpose, and he's out there in the community offering resources and all that. I was just wondering if there's an area that has a high crime and we're targeting that area, if there's some way, somehow, we can look at ways of, and that community comes together and says, we're going to hire an off-duty officer, because we see such a need for it. Maybe there's some type of grant or some type of waiver, if it's, fits these categories of a high crime, has all this data that proves that there is, and that there is a block watch association or a neighborhood association... watch association or a neighborhood association coordinating these "Take Back Our Neighborhoods", or our fight—fighting that crime. If we can maybe in the future look at some ways to help those individuals, and at the same time, they're really helping us police those neighborhoods. So, maybe—
Because we can look at that. That's part of the evaluation process. Better way of doing it.
Councilmember Williams?
Well, in what you just said, we have block watch grants, and I know they're usually used on the individual and service just the needs. Is there any way that we could add a category for a small amount of money but sufficient enough that when circumstances such as he just described, that that could be a grant possibility that could be available year-round if applied? Could we look into that?
We certainly can, yes.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Well, thank you so much, Chief. Thank you.
Thanks, Joe.
All righty, we're on item number 12. Our Public Safety Budget Update.
Am I going anywhere?
Chief, you're stuck there for a while.
It's your last one.
You know, back in September, the Subcommittee asked that we have a budget report from all of our public safety entities, and starting on September—the end of September, we started doing this, and it's been really enlightening that all the savings that we see that our firefighters, our police officers, and our court system actually has, and all the innovative ways of saving costs. So, I'd like to thank you for putting these numbers together and working patiently with this as we fine-tune this process. So, with that, it's all yours.
Okay, I guess the police department will start. I have with me today our fiscal administrator, Jill Selaya. So, Jill, if you'd please elaborate.
Okay. Good morning.
Good morning.
Our budget is still $563 million, and for the month of October, the reason—the difference is due to—from last fiscal year to this fiscal year, what we spent is, one, we didn't pay a jail bill in October, and then the other one is because we paid overhead to Aviation Department. We charge them once a year for our overhead, and that's basically a credit to our budget, so that's why it's less. And then, as you can see, the total for both fiscal years, we're pretty much on target for both years. Our top 10 expenditures are, again, salaries at 16%. Overtime is at .84, and then you've got sick leave and equipment management, auto and property insurance, our regional wireless co-op that we pay, our jail services, hardware maintenance, vacation leave payout, and then our holiday pay. One-time expenditures that we've had is for clothing allowance of $2.7 million, and then various insurances that we have to pay at the beginning of the fiscal year of 1.1. Our revenues for July through October, comparing from last fiscal year to this fiscal year, our court awards didn't change from last month. It's basically on what we ask to get reimbursement from the courts for our court awards. The SRO program, the difference from last year to this year is because we were able to increase how much we charge for SROs. We have a three-year agreement with the schools that we stay constant for three years, and this is the first year for our increase. The IGAs, we actually—for this increase is due to our Southwest Border Alliance program that we help with investigations and laundering of money and things like that at the borders. We were unable to charge for costs that we incurred last year for a couple of our lieutenants because it wasn't in the agreement, so we went back and updated the agreement, and we were able to charge this year. And then, the last one is pawn shop that has a variance, and that one is basically due to—the pawn shops enter the tickets, and they make the deposit, so it's kind of out of our control. So, if they get behind on their tickets, then that kind of changes our revenue collections. And that's it.
Any questions? Councilmember Gago.
Yesterday, the council voted to eliminate 31 positions from the police department. Could you talk a little bit about that and the process that I assume you went through to produce those 31?
Yeah. We basically took a look at our vacant civilian positions because that's basically all we can eliminate, and we took a look at the different programs and the areas of where these positions were, and to see—we kind of had to prioritize what our department's going to do, and eliminate probably a lot of administrative-type positions, and if some programs—if we can reduce the number of people that are working on certain programs, we were able to do that. We didn't really eliminate anything through communications because our overtime right now is really high for communications because, one, we're trying to get them hired, and, two, we want to keep that staffing up. But we just try to look at the administrative areas more than anything for where we can eliminate the positions.
It looked like we had a lot of forensics and some of the pe—
Yeah, we had a few of those, but they were able to not have those anymore because they had other ones. They had additional positions of that same type, so they were able to do that. I mean, we work with each one of the commanders or lieutenants that are in charge of that precinct or bureau before we make those decisions, and then it goes up to the assistant chiefs and the chief to make the final decision.
I think this group has been a little concerned about some of the backlog and processing data and trying to cut down on that.
And so are we.
So, when you cut administrative positions, where does that work shift to?
It basically will shift to just other staff that are within that unit. Sometimes, like, we have admin sergeants that are working at the precincts. They might have to take on a little more administrative-type work than they had to in the past, but we just—we just move it around to what—we just do what we can do to keep—
Within the—
—operating as.
So, nothing then—all that administrative paperwork, does it go? Does it shift to the officers?
No.
Okay.
No. We still keep it with the civilians, but sometimes we might spend a little more overtime in the civilian areas just because of trying to get things caught up or reducing backlog.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions? A suggestion—I know we're fine-tuning this as we go. I love what you did with the expenditures that you had, the last year's and this year's, the comparisons. I like to see the—I like to see that on the top 10 expenditures, too, so we can look back of last year where the salaries, overtime, and all that is, so we can have a comparison that if we're improving or if we're going up or not. Because it seems like—you know, overtime, it seems like a lot, but compared to last year, I'm not sure where we were at or not, right?
All right. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is the courts.
Mr. Chair, members of the Subcommittee, good morning. The—what shows here on the first slide for the municipal court is actually our expenses to date. I think to be more consistent with what the other departments here are showing, this should have been our full-year budget, which is roughly $29 million, but this is where we are year-to-date in terms of what we've spent this year. And if we go to the next slide, we can see what the breakdowns are in terms of each month of this fiscal year so far with the variance from last year. And as you can see, interestingly, in October, it looks like we had the opposite situation as the police department, and we spent more in October than we did the year before. My budget people looked at that pretty closely to determine what it was. That was a significant number of retirements that we had come along in October of this year that resulted in some payouts. I've had them look at November to see if that continued for us or was a one-time, and in November, we are back under what we had spent year-over-year. As you can see, the total, though, cumulatively, still puts us a little over 3% under what we spent last fiscal year at this point. On the next slide, you can see what those top 10 expenditures are and what the percentage of budget is. Again, as with most of the others, overwhelmingly personnel costs. If you look at that, in fact, the only thing that's not specifically personnel costs are the special contractual services that we're showing there. So, pretty consistent with where we've been in the past and again this year. If we go to the next one, I've decided that we're going to change that from anomalies. I'm not sure that is a great caption for the slide. Really, they're simply one-time annual costs, and these are ones that we incurred earlier in the year, and we've talked about, I think, certainly at least the last time we were here. Finally, revenues. As you can see—and we had a little bit of a discussion last time about what the categories are, the fines and the forfeitures, the other miscellaneous and the services. These are the breakdowns that we get in the city's accounting system. Services is a little bit misleading. That's not money for services necessarily that we provide. That is how we account for some of the revenues the court collects that are not, in fact, fines or forfeitures. So, there are certain fees that come through, such as jail costs, such as default fees that are imposed when people do not show up for a civil traffic hearing, and various fees like that. And again, to be clear, this is not the total amount of money that the court collects, but what we have broken down here is the amount of what the court collects that goes into the general fund. This is the money the court collects that stays with the city and doesn't pass through to the state or other entities.
Any questions for our court system?
Same question as I asked about the—will you speak to the—I think it was 10 vacancies in the court system?
Exactly. Yes, Mr. Chair, Councilwoman Gago, we sat down and took a look in conjunction with the Budget and Research Department and looked at what our vacancy rate has been over the last several years. It needed to identify areas where we could act more strategically, and we really put a lot of thought on the division level into which of those vacancies it could be that would cause us—or that would not cause us, actually, to have a problem with the types of services that we deliver. So, you'll notice, for example, that a couple of the positions were IT positions. IT is something that we are much more flexible in in terms of potential funding sources, for example, through the Arizona Supreme Court. So, we know we have some options there that make us a little more nimble, and given where we are at the moment with our IT, that was one that made perfect sense. The others represented vacancies that had been in place for a while in various support roles throughout the court. They were really very scattered throughout the court and not in any particular areas. And with the length of time that they had been vacant, we had division administrators that looked very closely at the workloads and the levels of what was going on and decided that we could, in fact, move forward. Is not to say that the people that remain there are not extraordinarily busy. They are. But we determined that going forward, we could continue to meet the service levels that we have without those positions. So, we tried—we tried very carefully to strategically identify them so that it's not something that would hurt us over the long term.
Any other questions?
Just on the chief presiding judge, the document we got said salary would be based on experience, and given this item, I think we should probably be publicly clear that the salary will be based on past president and budget and many other concerns beyond experience. I just wanted to say that publicly.
Thank you for putting that on the record. Any other questions?
I just want to know, services and everything will run smoothly?
Mr. Chair, Councilwoman Pastore, absolutely. In terms of those that the public really notices, for example, they will not begin to not have a stellar experience when they are called in for jury service. We pride ourselves—that being one of the things that the public really sees, and one of the few ways they come into the court when they're not actually charged or a victim of a crime. We will continue to provide that as an experience that helps people feel like they've really been a part of things. We are also working to make sure that the aspect of people's experience with the court from the defendant and the victim perspective stays something that is done in a very timely manner. Because one of the things that potentially happens in a court setting, if staffing levels are too low or workload is too high, is it takes longer to adjudicate cases. And when it takes longer to adjudicate cases, that benefits nobody. We have kept a very close eye for several years now on what our times to disposition are, and that is pretty much our first concern when we look at it. Whether or not we can go forward with these staffing levels is how do we maintain that level of service so that people won't suddenly start feeling like a case in court is going to take them way too long.
And so, you had a great question. How do you maintain it? Those that are there, they're just—the work is shifted, and then if work needs to get done, is there overtime that is offered? Okay.
Councilwoman Pastore, in all honesty, people work harder. People work harder, and we take a very close look at all aspects of the function, and we decide whether there are some things that are—
Not priorities.
—nice to have, but not strictly necessary, or not strictly necessary to get done today.
Okay.
And then, we do prioritize in that fashion.
Thank you.
I just want to thank you. We have a 3% savings, but at the same time, I was just looking at the revenues that we collect. We're down a little bit from last year when it comes to fines. Behind that, are—
Mr. Chair, that's a good point, and we spoke briefly about this last time. We are down a little bit in the recovery of fines, and again, that's consistent with what we would expect to see, given that we have seen, again, this year, a decline in the number of filings, especially a decline in the number of civil traffics—or civil traffic charges that are filed in the court.
All righty. Thank you for that explanation, and we're off to fire. Mr. Chairman, members of council, I'll go through the fires budget. As you see up there, our annualized budget is $304,82,303. At this point in the year, we're at 33% of the year. We've expended 32.9%, which is the $98,93152, which is pretty characteristic of what we feel like we should be with the budget at this point. So, for the monthly expenditures, as you can see, the percent variance, they're all increases, the largest being September. There's a few one-time contracts that hit that were paid out, and as well as some—and I think as a general characteristic of the other months is our personnel services costs, which you'll see on the next slide, is—which is the largest portion of our budget. So, there are slight increases that have to do with wages and overtime and such. So, the top 10 expenditures, much like my colleagues here, are salaries, pensions, health insurance. Constant staffing is one that we talked about in a previous meeting. It is a challenge for us. We are still seeing an ordinarily high amount of constant staffing. This is the folks that are called in to staff the positions when they're—then when we don't have people that are present. We're doing a couple things here. One is we see a large amount of turnover in the fire system around June when the retirees—last year, we had about 28 of those. But until we get a class in the academy to replace them, those replacements are people that we call in. So, there's a class that's graduating here within the next week or two, which will help us a little bit with that, and then we expect sometime after the first of the year to go back and hire for the folks that have left between the July-June timeframe and now. So, the other costs are pretty much tracking pretty much what we had thought. Jill's going fast. The one-time expenditure, it's an anomaly. I know it's a small amount. It's for our Ebola preparation. We expect to see this higher. We're thinking—we're estimating somewhere around $100,000 we'll spend, mostly in protective gear. And we're also leveraging the fact that Phoenix is being used as a regional response network for true Ebola patients. So, we're able to tap into some county funds as well as some other funds that are out there, and we're going to be looking at those as far as protective gear for this purpose here. And then, lastly, these are the three highest revenues that we collect. Our ambulance transports are the highest. There's a slight increase up until this point in the year where we expect to see the true increases are going to come in January because they're a result of the changes in the access, the allowable fees that we can charge. The other two fees are the costs that we charge our partners—the 26 partners in this region—to dispatch for them and to maintain their equipment. I think that was the last slide. So, I'll take any questions you might have.
On that last slide, we have an increase on the dispatch fees and the maintenance. It's quite a bit. Could you kind of tell us why, or what do you see the increase being?
Could you kind of tell us why or what do you see the increase being? Just more calls? It's more calls. It also has a lot to do with the partners, if they brought on a new fire station or new apparatus, we'll install equipment in those and the charges go up for those as well. If you look at probably the last five years, they were pretty consistent. Every year, we do see an increase in costs and those are, obviously, they're given to the partners, they pay for their portion of it, which is about 51 percent of the total cost for us to operate our dispatch center. But they consume about 51 percent of the time and effort and calls regionally. And which other cities are using our system, are paying into that system? Chairman, I'd have to actually look at lists. There's about 26 of them, but it's pretty much everybody in the region. It's probably easier for me to talk about exceptions. Mesa has their own dispatch center and I believe Queen Creek and there's a couple in the east, Far East Valley. But with the exception of that, the rest of them are part of the Phoenix Regional Dispatch. Any other questions? Well, thank you all for reporting and every month we find a little fine tuning going on, but I think if we can actually add the past year on the top 10, that'd be great, so we can actually compare it. But once again, it's really important that individuals know what our budget is and that we're being good stewards of the tax revenue that's out there that people are putting into the system. It's not just once a year when we go to budget hearings that we talk about budgets, so thank you all. And then, oh, I'm sorry, before you leave, we have a couple cards. We have Mr. Alt Gray, if he could come on down.
Thank you, Councilman Nowakowski and council members. Just wanted to say, you know, premature in a way at this time because we're so short in police officers, but I've heard the chief say that he wants to build up to where we were five years ago when we had a full staff. And I remind you that that's when we had the Berkshire report that said we were overstaffed. So I think that's something to watch. I think that things can still be done more effectively in the police department with existing staff to reduce crime and to prevent crime. I've seen examples on the West Side where I live and I, you know, just by more effective meetings, more effective coffee with the cops, I'd like to see some use of advertising in both the police and fire departments to kind of just keep the message out there and use that as prevention. And also, a little additional funding for prevention organizations, particularly the drug and alcohol kinds of prevention organizations. So I just make those general comments. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gray. And then we have Mrs. Barker, if you could come on down.
Season's greetings and I have to say, Councilman Nowakowski, it's my councilman District 7, Diane Barker here. You seem to surround and get the support of competent and attractive women at home and in the workplace here, you know?
Blessed that I am among women.
Yeah, right. It happens. Good for you. Okay, I have a statement and a proposal and a request and I do ditto the gentleman before me. Public safety, that's your reason for being here and half of our city's budget is important. It's important to me. I live downtown, right close to government and see things, just even the degradation of our environment. And I promised even Linda Torres, councilman, that I would still be on the pick-a-pound. I pick a pound of litter up and that's my quota for a day. We keep an area that is up to best practices and cleanliness and I think that helps out in public safety. The other thing is communication and everybody, whether in the private or the public sector, knows that communication is key. And I propose that we use departments as the police, the law, the mayors and the council and the city management and we put more money into mediation for conflicts, conflicts that rise up through public coming into city council, conflicts that come every day, conflicts that come in through email, conflicts that become their violations, even misdemeanors from some police and the police, and a person comes and says, why does this have to be litigated when it is obvious that the policy is XYZ? And I have personal experience where I've won, helped people win a couple of cases with the police department. So mediation, that is what the proposal is. There would be a body of mediation. We would even have somebody be more independent, like municipal ombudsman with red tote. RT it. There are certain things that need to go into red tote that means they need to be done now and the reason we do it, we need to get the communication so we don't have the violence and we don't have the ongoing waste and abuse of public funds because we are not hearing and clearing the problem.
Thank you, Mrs. Barker, for those input. Now I think we're on future gen items. Is there any future gen items? Councilmember Williams?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. You know, I have read and heard in the media and now I'm being asked by constituents, what is the police department's policy and how is it written? And so I would like to have a presentation so that they come in and tell us how their policy is written and how is it modified, what triggers the process and what are the steps for alleged officer violations? Is there a review by a citizens committee along the way? Who has the final determination? How is it applied consistently? Is the city manager's review included in this process of the final determination and is there an appeal process? So if you could walk us from the beginning to the end, I would greatly appreciate it because I don't get it, so. Thank you.
You know, and I think we need to think about the safety of our police officers and their families too, because we'll release people's names before we even have a panel that they go through and if they're innocent or not, I think that we should wait until that process goes through. So I want to make sure that our firefighters, our police officers and all of our employees are protected and taken care of and that there is some type of process that we go by.
Also, I'm very concerned when it's released, what protection do we give the family at their home and the residence? Because everybody has access to everybody's address anymore and that's a legitimate concern. I don't want 200 picketers or someone going to exact revenge for it, they think that, but I think it's a very serious situation and we ought to have a policy that protects families of officers that are involved in any way in these incidents when there's not been a determination of what actually happened.
Absolutely. Councilmember Pastore?
Well, I just think that it goes into harassment of the family, bullying of the family, if it's the wife or the kids. There's a number of areas that we need to understand and in particular, I have great concern of releasing a name and understanding the whole point of releasing it, so, without being briefed and notified.
Any other future gen items?
Like to commend the work that Commander Kurtenbach and others are doing on the cameras and would get, like to get an update on the pilot with body cameras.
Great. And I think next month, seeing that it is, Super Bowl's in town and February 1st, that we get an update on the public safety aspect of the Super Bowl. I think that's, anything else? I think this meeting's adjourned. Thank you so much and I think we'll be seeing you all back at 3 o'clock talking about our ethics policy. Thank you.